The meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, May 1st, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it's being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:04-6@SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dede.
Yes.
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Stansieal.
Here.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Weiser, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Ms. Steinle.
All right. If we could say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. This meeting is open to the general public. Are there any members of the public who wish to come forward and say anything that is not on our agenda at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Nora, please note that Mayor Barberio has arrived and is ready to take part in our hearings. All right. So, um, we start off, we have no, we don't have a resolution to look at, um, so we go right into the agenda. We have our master plan consistency review. Ordinance 2023-07 amending Chapter 430, conditional uses. Is this how you want to start? Mr. Weiser?
Um, sure. It's your agenda. I mean...
Well, I was just, uh...
So, we have in front of us this draft ordinance, um, and you can see, uh, under, in the middle of the first page of your Section 1, it talks about underlying text being new, strike-through text being deleted, um, there, and then if you go through the entirety of the document, you'll notice there's nothing new. Um, the strikeouts are 1, 2, and 3 items under conditional uses for fast food restaurants. Um, 1, item 1, 2, and 9. In my opinion, these really don't impact anything as relates to the master plan. There's, the use is not changing. It's not being added or deleted. It's just being modified in terms of what the conditions are. So, in terms of your recommendation of consistency with the master plan, uh, it's very similar to what we, uh, talked about the last time we did one of these where we used the term "not inconsistent."
Yeah.
Because basically, the master plan doesn't speak to this level of detail.
Right.
And that's all I have.
That's all you have? Is there any history behind this?
I did not, um, draft this. I was not involved in this, so I can't speak to that at all.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stansieal?
Um, what is the definition of a fast food restaurant?
Wasn't that a fine question? Um, unfortunately, I can't look that up because I've got it looked up here. Does anybody have the information?
I don't remember it off the top of my head. It's, it's food that can consumed, um, on premise quickly, uh, top of my head.
If you want me to look it up...
It's not like a seating...
Well, Baldwin Pizzeria and Baldwin Bagels are right next to each other. Technically, you could get a slice of pizza and a sandwich pretty quick.
They were not considered fast food.
Okay.
And when, when we issued permits for pizzerias, they were not considered fast food. It's McDonald's, Burger King, those...
But do we have an actual official definition of fast food?
Yes. It's in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
Would you like me to look it up? No, I mean, if we have one...
Actually, I think it would be relevant.
I think it's very relevant for us to, to know how we defined it.
Do you feel fair with me for just a second?
I just see future fights, and that's why I was just trying to...
Well, because one of my very first cases on the Board of Adjustment in 1990...
Yep.
...had to do with putting fast food restaurants within 1,000 feet of each other.
Andrew, how's it?
I got the hard copy of the code here.
Andrew?
Fast food restaurant and definitions of zoning ordinance. Uh, business or establishment engaged in the sale of pre-prepared, pre-prepared or rapidly prepared food, as you said, soft drinks, ice cream, coffee, donuts, and similar confections, which is sold directly to the customer in a ready-to-use, ready-to-consume state for consumption either within the restaurant building or off premises, uh, but not within drive-in cars on the premises, premises, except restaurants where drive-through windows permitted. So, I can repeat it if you like, but that's...
It still sounds a little loose.
Well, I have a question, though, for clarification on that matter, then. Uh, fast-serve restaurants like Chipotle have their food prepared in advance, but often don't have it in their prepackaged condition. So, would Chipotle, with, you know, which is in town, be considered a fast food, or is that a different...
No.
Okay.
Just, just a moment here. Our attorney says we may have a more up-to-date definition.
Okay.
So, just from the 20, there was a 2021 amendment, um, so the set, the beginning of the definition is basically the same. Business, excuse me, or establishment engaged in the sale of pre-prepared or rapidly prepared food or beverages which are sold directly to the customer in a ready-to-consume state for consumption either on or off the premises. Such operations shall occur within an enclosed building with or without a drive-through or walk-up window. Fast food restaurants may also provide takeout or delivery service.
So, it sounds like the takeout and delivery service are, are the additions there.
So, somebody explain to me why a pizza bar wouldn't fall under that definition.
Yeah, exactly.
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
It has, restaurants have seating, and it always was in the past that things like McDonald's, Burger King, and Taco Bell, they were considered your fast food restaurants. Pizzerias where they're largely making the pizza, and you can be sitting there for 25 to 30 minutes waiting for the pizza, that's not readily consumed. They're cooking it in the, in the oven. They're making your soup and your pasta in the back. It readily is several minutes. So, the idea was something that could be made, you know, your chicken nuggets or your french fries that are two or three minutes, your Chick-fil-A, those were your fast food restaurants. It's been like that since the past 50 years.
Yeah, that definition is not inconsistent. I mean, it's, it's a similar definition every time.
And Jen, since you're involved in the enforcement of this, you find that definition is adequate?
Yes, I've been using it the last 30 years. Yeah. It's rarely questioned. It's not...
Okay.
All right. So, the, the purposes, if I remember correctly, of having these distances, the 1,000 feet apart, was to prevent situation, I mean, many, many years ago, we had places like Route 22 and Union that suddenly had fast food restaurants every other, uh, the, every other lot.
Mm-hmm.
And now, I do believe we do have a situation where we've got all sorts of interesting restaurants that may or may not be fast food restaurants.
Well, I will defer this to counsel, but I know for gas stations, there are many towns that used to have ordinances that say you can't have gas stations within, call it 500 feet of each other, and that was struck down, uh, as a blanket rule, absent any other, um, intervening, uh, condition. So, I would imagine that something like we have here that just is a blanket, you can't have fast food within 1,000 feet of another fast food would be treated similarly.
Okay. That's important for us to know.
I seem to understand, though, that other towns have ordinances on the books which restrict, uh, certain types of restaurants, specifically fast food, uh, you know, even within their whole township.
Yeah, and, uh, I'm going to guess that those would be, if they were challenged, they would...
They would lose in court. They would lose in court.
Yeah.
Well, but those have been laws that have been on the books for some time, and they haven't been challenged.
And they have been law of odds.
Okay. It seems odd that...
Pardon me, I'm practicing, uh...
It seems odd that those want to be challenged. Um, at any rate, though, uh, you know, one of my interpretations of Goal 8, uh, which re, relates to sustainability, has always been about, uh, whether or not the nature of, of the difference, uh, ways that we develop in town are beneficial for the long-term sustainability of our town. And what we see with, uh, with grocery stores exiting, with, uh, other restaurants that provide what we'll say higher-quality food as opposed to fast food quality food, um, when those businesses leave the town, you have severe problems with, uh, the town going downhill, uh, property values declining, uh, um, income levels of people, uh, declining, and health of people declining, which to me goes to sustainability. And so, the, uh, laws like this, which are in place now, help us to make sure that our town continues to thrive. Um, and I won't state specifically, although it's been on social media, what my opinion is of certain other businesses, which have also been tied to the decline of townships, fast food being one of them. So, um, I believe that especially this number 9 provision, uh, does go against Goal 8 in terms of sustainability, ensuring that our township has that sustainability factor. Sustainability is not just about the environment, although I know a lot of my, uh, fellow board members see it that way.
Number 9 also eliminates some other discussions I've been involved with many years ago. How do you measure 1,000 feet? If you have a fast food restaurant on 46th East, another one across the street on 46th West, do you measure as the crow flies, or do you measure going down to a U-turn, turning around, and coming back? Uh, that was another discussion that was always a problem. This eliminates, getting rid of this requirement eliminates that problem.
Well, what, I, I mean, what, uh, zoning districts would we allow fast food restaurants to be in? And this is only under Title, under 430, and you got it for B2.
Yeah, B2.
And it's only B2. Do we still have any of these sort of provisions in the other...
I will tell you, Mr. Chairman, uh, as I said, I didn't write this, um, I didn't go into that level of research, so I can't answer your question.
We, we have a member of the public who's willing to come up and, and point something out. Would our member of the public like to come forward?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, member of the public. Johnny Viscino, Viscino Taylor, 600 Precipiny Road here in Precipiny. Um, just a little context, uh, Dr. Mahida is, is a client of mine who owns this, uh, property. Um, there's...
This is an ordinance. It's not out of property.
Well, the, the property was the, the impetus for the, uh...
Oh, okay.
...petition or to, uh, to make this change.
It's important that we know he's not unbiased.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm just, you know, I should have told you straight, as I always will. Um, that, that restriction is inhibiting the marketability of, of property that he owns, which is, uh, the property next to the Outback Steakhouse that has the office building on it that goes back to the 1960s.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there was a, um, a restriction, uh, a distance restriction for whatever reason. Candidly, I called Gordon Meth, uh, because he's the traffic guy, and I knew that that restriction was somehow rooted in, in trap, more in traffic concerns rather than definition of fast food. Sorry that Mr. Meth isn't here tonight, but I can represent to you that he told me he had absolutely no problem whatsoever with this change, and he felt that anything that the town could do, uh, to stimulate reinvestment along that part of Route 46 would be a good thing. Um, what my client tells me is that that food, the food industry continues to evolve, and there are upscale fast food restaurant opportunities that would be available, uh, in that part of Route 46, which was really the impetus for, for this discussion, that that 1,000-foot barrier now actually prevents, uh, that kind of modernization and investment being made in, in Route 46. So, I, again, I reached out to, to Gordon Meth because he's the resident traffic expert, and, uh, he assured me in no uncertain terms, he had absolutely no problem and would be supportive of it. So, I just wanted to give that little context for the board.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm now going to venture an opinion here. Uh, that particular piece of property is also very close to a school and a church, and the Outback Steakhouse was a very contentious application when that came forward. The church opposed it, and finally, they came to some sort of a meeting of the minds. So, I, as long as, if we make this change, the, then the consistency required would actually have to come through the process of the application for that particular use within the proximity of the school and the church.
And everybody within 200 feet would get notice?
So, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to, trying to reconcile that part of town with the possibility of, I mean, because we've got Chick-fil-A coming in just down the street, we've got McDonald's across the street, uh...
Panera Bread.
Panera Bread. I have trouble thinking that...
Is that a fast food restaurant?
Yeah.
Fast food or is that not fast food?
I have trouble thinking of that because they, they do a lot of preparation.
That's not fast food.
You have the McDonald's across the street, and you have the, and Chick-fil-A coming in.
Right.
I think those would both qualify.
So, I'm, I'm...
Starbucks, maybe.
I, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of how we would go through the process of fairly and appropriately regulating things like this, where maybe one location is fine, but another location has issues that we need to be cognizant of.
Well, certainly, the site plan review process would, would provide that opportunity.
But they'd be compliant with all of the rules, so it's really just about whether or not we're talking about order of the property rules and, and that kind of thing.
It's just about it.
The use would be accepted at that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Um, I, I guess my, my larger problem is, is a lot of times, not, not through any fault of their own, but these fast food restaurants do tend to make it less of an option for local, smaller restaurants who are independent to be able to thrive. They, they do take a lot of business because it's a well-known brand that's attractive and, and, and people do tend to compete with it.
I'm going to, I'm going to argue that right now, Gen Z doesn't want anything to do with fast food.
Oh, that might be the case, but that's my position on it.
Mr. DePaulitano? Once again, we're not talking about whether fast food should be permitted in the zone. It's already permitted. It's just the conditions under which it's permitted.
And by making those conditions less restrictive, you're allowing more.
You're allowing different...
You're allowing more. You're now allowing restaurants to be within 1,000 feet of each other, where now they're not.
I mean, it's in the Chick-fil-A driveway, like 1,000 feet long. I'm just pointing out, I mean, it's, it's a...
Everyone I've been to, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I don't know. I mean, I'm...
Well, the, the question is not necessarily whether there would be more, there might be more densely packed and then less laid elsewhere.
They do tend to out-compete your, your other restaurants, though. And if, if I had the time to bring up the references, I'm sure I could, I could provide them.
Okay. Well, we're, we're working on trying to find whether this is consistent with the master plan or not.
Yeah. So, I've raised that, uh, it's not consistent with Goal 8. I will acknowledge that it's, it's a little bit of my interpretation of Goal 8, which may not be everybody's interpretation, and I've spoken my piece on the matter, so...
Now, I'm going to have to ask our planner, but probably more our attorney. We've heard comments that suggest that maybe, uh, having a, a rule like not within 1,000 feet is inconsistent with our state laws and therefore might not survive a challenge. Is there a way that we can put in that we would like to try to, I'll say regulate rather than limit, the number of fast food restaurants in the area, in town, while not running into this issue with the state, and perhaps, as I was getting at, maybe being a bit more, uh, generous with what zones or what locations fast food restaurants can be in, and yet still at the same time keeping the number in the town smaller?
I think we're trying to read more into this than that was there. This, this to me is a non-issue.
Well, that, respectfully...
We, we can't point to one example where this was a problem anywhere in town, and I don't think we ever will. We spend a lot of time on, on 9.
We spent a lot of time in the 90s on Arlington Plaza.
Well, I, I mean, it goes back to the, is Panera Bread fast food, or is it not because it's right next to McDonald's?
You can sit down and eat in there. Order, sit down and eat.
Quickly.
Yeah, but the food's prepared, uh, on request, and I think that's the, the difference.
Well, Wendy's prepares food on request. When you order a cheeseburger from Wendy's, it's prepared on request.
I, I guess I'd prefer...
That's why I'm, I'm going back to the definition of fast food.
Well, and that's, that's why...
You can't, it's so loosely defined, right? You go to Wendy's, they make your burger right then and there.
Well, I don't, I think they, they put on burger, fixings together, but I think the, the...
It's flame broiled.
...itself is precooked.
I, I think when they run out of supply that during, that use specifically...
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, the definition of fast food could be so loosely applied. You, you had, you, you can go to Jersey Mike's, which is fast food, but they're making, they're preparing the food right there, so I...
All right.
I have no problem with...
I have no problem striking...
I have no problem with this, with this either. The fact is this, you got two McDonald's, one up right over here, one down over here. You got two Taco Bells, um, and they're all fast food. I mean, are they competing against each other? I don't know if they are or aren't, but, um, 1,000 feet, I don't know if it, I, I, like, like everybody else, I, I don't have an issue with it, as, as a council, as a councilman said, I...
Well, just as importantly, that what it says is 1,000 feet in the lot, from lot line. So, you've got McDonald's, Habit Burger, and Wendy's would all be captured by that 1,000 feet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, quick, uh, quick comment, right? So, personally, I don't have any issue with this particular clause, and I think every, every situation has to be case-by-case basis. I think you have to look at it individually and figure out if it makes sense, or if there's other issues with the traffic or whatever that may be at that moment, right? I don't think we can go generic and say there is an issue with this particular clause. I just want to bring an example to everybody's attention. If you go Route 10 West, Roxbury Mall area, there's actually McDonald's and Taco Bell right across the street, and a Panera Bread as well in the Roxbury Mall. So, and it all works, right? So, uh, so in theory, it all, I mean, it's a practical example of it's sustainable, it's workable, um, as long as that they are not causing other issues.
So, to address your point, though, do you have any independent, uh, restaurants in that area?
I did not pay attention, but I'm not sure, yeah.
I don't believe there's any independent restaurants in that area. Um, I don't believe that your, your perhaps slower-serve restaurants are available, and also as a counterpoint, this is exactly the time we need to talk about these things, because when it does come to a site plan evaluation, this is already a permitted use. So, you won't have the ability during a site plan review to make a judgment on this. Well, this is the time you have to make a judgment on whether or not it's an, an acceptable use.
But in this particular area, you have Empire Diner, you have Outback, you have Applebee's, and you have Echola.
Yeah.
So, you have four.
Yep, so Empire Diner...
And you have McDonald's, Panera, and Chick-fil-A.
And then you're going to have Top Golf, which has its own restaurant.
Which has its own, but again, so you're going to have, you're going to have like five or six independent restaurants.
Yeah. And, and Route 46 is the heart of the town, right? And you would expect a lot more things happening here versus everywhere else.
Versus an ugly brick building, by the way.
So, I think if you go to New York City, you know, you'll find a bunch of things in the same, same, you know, avenue or street, so...
Okay. All right. Well, we're going to have, uh, we're going to have to come to a vote as to whether we find this consistent or not. Are there members of the public who would like to, uh, what's the proper, ask questions, I guess, at this point in time? Of this, uh, testimony at this time? No questions to be asked? All right. Do you have anything further you wish to, to...
I, I don't, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this, uh, ordinance change at this time? All right. Hearing and seeing none. This closes the evidentiary portion of this hearing at this time. Um, do we want to have a discussion about this?
Wait, just, can I just clarify something first? Uh, so this, it seems like we're talking about an area on 46 across from Smithfield, but this ordinance would change for everywhere in town. Is that accurate?
No, only B2.
Okay. Where also there are B2s in this, in there, in, um, in our town.
Stuart, do you have that?
There's a map that'll show you all of that. Don't have it handy.
Yeah, Long 46 and, of course, and a Long 10. Does that sound right?
Okay. Is this like on 202? Uh, or 53?
Highway.
Has to be on a highway, like a multi-lane highway?
Yeah, it has to be on a state highway.
Okay.
Good, thank you. So, not Lake Hiawatha, not 202?
Right. Well, 202 is a state highway.
Right, but it's one lane in most of the area, so...
Exactly. So, I believe it is four-lane highway is the, the...
Okay, so that's the entire Route 46 and Route 10.
Yep.
Yep. So, not like 202 where there's two lanes by, um, the Seven Way area?
Right. Not, not 202, not 53.
Okay.
Most of 202 is...
Well, the area 202 by Seven Way is four lanes.
That's B1.
It's what?
B1.
That's B1. Okay.
B1 also allows conditions.
For B2 almost.
But this is only for B2.
Thanks for the clarification.
No, it's important. That's, I mean, we're only proposing this for B2. We still have site plan regul, regulatory oversight, so that if we find that, that the, there's a saturation...
We're not changing the use. We're not changing the use, right?
No, you're just changing the conditions.
I know.
And if somebody can't meet the other conditions, they go to the zone.
All right.
Okay.
I can just add that the board has to make a determination whether, on balance, the ordinance changes are not inconsistent with the master plan, so possibly one goal is not directly achieved, but on balance, is it not inconsistent with the master plan? I know double negative, but that's the language of the law.
All right. Is there any need for further discussion? Is there, is somebody willing to make a motion that we find this consistent with the master plan or not, not inconsistent or something like that?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. DePaulitano?
Uh, master plan consistency review, motion to approve ordinance 2023-07, amending Chapter 430, conditional uses, that it is not inconsistent with our master plan.
Second, Dede.
Nora, would you call a roll, please?
Barberio.
Yes.
DeDe.
Yes.
DePiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Stansieal.
Yes.
Veely. Yes.
Von Aiken.
No.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
All right. Very good. Now, moving on to our next item on our agenda is referral to planning board of a conduct to conduct a preliminary investigation of property within the township for potential redevelopment. This is Resolution 23:058, 6 Silden Way, Block 202, Lot 1.9.
This is very similar to something we did at, done at the last meeting, the meeting before, where, uh, the governing body made this referral and directive for the planning board to undertake a study to determine whether the property that, um, the chairman just spoke to is, uh, meets any of the statutory criteria for an area in need of redevelopment. Um, what you're being asked to do is just direct us to do the study in accordance with the directive of the governing body. We'll go away for a little while, we'll do the study, we'll come back, we'll present to you, uh, something that is very similar, uh, at least in style and length, if not content, to what we're going to present to you in a couple of minutes and what we presented, to what we're gonna present to you in a couple of minutes and what we presented, I believe, at the last meeting.
Fair enough, are there any questions by members of the board on this?
Uh, for clarification, is this the old AVIS and budget building? Is that the one?
I believe it is.
Okay.
Any questions? Hearing and seeing none. Um, what's the extent that the public should participate in this?
There's really usually no public participation, but you could if someone has a question.
Okay, is there any member of the public that has a question on this, uh, resolution at this time? Hearing and seeing none. All right, uh, we wish to go to a motion. I have a volunteer to make a motion.
I'll make one.
Mr. De Palatano, thank you.
Uh, motion to approve referral to the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation of property within the township for potential redevelopment, which is resolution 23:058, 6 Sylvan Way, block 202, lot 1.9.
Second. Laura, would you call a roll, please?
Barbario.
Yes.
DeDe.
Yes.
DePiero.
Yes.
Healy.
Yes.
De Palatano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Dan Ziel.
Yes.
Healy.
Yes.
Von Aken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. Okay. Let's move on. Now we go on to the big item of tonight. Uh, the master plan consistency, area in review, or area in need of redevelopment, 20 to 30 Lanedex LLC, block 226, lots 3.2 and 3. So now we're gonna take a moment because we have some members of the board who would like to be in a position where they can see the presentation straight on, as well as one or two of our professionals. So they're going to go from here out into an area of the audience where there are no other audience numbers for them to talk to.
I want to say that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hot mic. Hot mic. Jamie, could you, could this light go off? Just keep those on?
The other one.
There you go.
That's the one.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, is this, is this on? I can't tell, I can hear it. You can, okay, thank you. Uh, I'm not usually using these. My Mr. De Palatano's got a hot mic.
Hot mic.
He's walking out.
Me?
I'm sorry, um.
Andrew.
Andrew.
Oh, Italians.
Yeah, sorry.
As soon as the Italians.
Two Italians in here. I don't want him to go use the restroom with a hot mic on.
Andrew, turn it off.
Andrew, just got a mic on. Okay, um. For the record, see the word Y. Grab the other mic.
It's the other mobile one. No, it's. I'm trying to turn it off.
Okay, hold the button down. Just hold it down and then it'll go off.
You know, shut off.
Hey, pick up this one or just talk about.
Okay.
I think it was Jen's mic, I don't think it was yours. It should be on, you're gonna mute it.
You just shut it. You missed it.
Is it green?
Hello, hello, hello? Testing, testing. Um, we went through this, uh, last time or the time before, don't remember. Um, this is a existing conditions report to determine whether the land that we've studied, block 226, lots 3 and 3.2 qualify with any of the statutory criteria under which an area may be deemed to be in need of redevelopment. As you may recall from the last time, there are eight such, such criteria under the local redevelopment and housing law. Um, we have taken a look at all of them, we have toured the site, we have taken pictures of the site, which are in this report. Um, and, uh, we will present our findings tonight and a recommendation. The recommendation will be, and Mr. Chairman, I, did you say when you introduced this that we're making a finding of consistency with the master plan?
I didn't.
Okay, then I misheard. Um, it's not a consistency with the master plan, it's a consistency with the criteria under the local redevelopment and housing law. So what we are looking at, and I apologize, um.
I did, I did say right off the agenda, master plan consistency, so.
Okay, um, that's not what we're doing here.
Okay.
So, um, what we have here is a two-lot area. It's about 10.5 acres, not including the rights of way. As I said before, it's block 226, lot 3 and 3.2, AKA 20-30 Lanedex Way, which currently hosts a commercial office building and associated parking lots. You all have this report, I'm speaking from this report. Uh, Mr. De Palatano, just, can we confirm that we're, the report is entered into the record?
Uh, yes, it was provided prior to the hearing, and it's made part of the record. Also, this hearing was properly noticed under the local redevelopment housing law.
Thank you. Um, the major, pardon me, the major defining characteristic of the area under study is its proximity to Route 80 and 287. In January of 2023, um, you know, I'm just gonna go. Let me just go back to the maps for now. There we go. So as you see, we have 3.2, we have, uh, lot 3.2, lot 3, block 226. Um, in the left, or the right-hand map, in the left-hand map, you can see it's almost smack dab in the middle of the township. In January of 2023, the governing body adopted a resolution directing you as the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation, as we discussed earlier, to determine consistency with the redevelopment law. In, later in January, um, you as a board directed, or accepted the directive and directed us to do the study. And satisfaction of the redevelopment law, section 6B as a buoy, a map showing the boundaries of the study area and a statement for the, uh, laying out the basis for this investigation were placed on file with the township clerk. In terms of zoning, the property is in the ROL or the office, uh, research office laboratory zone. In terms of existing conditions, the building has been vacant for approximately three years. During the course of that vacancy, there has been some dam, water damage and damage to the, um, the sprinkler systems and other systems within the building, leading to, uh, the damage you see here, which is typical of many areas, certain areas of the building, as well as mold, um, that is readily seen in certain locations. Um, but as we all know with mold, it's likely behind the scenes and not visible to the, to the naked eye. We also have an area to the left where the, um, the stairs are starting to lose their integrity, uh, creating a danger to people uh, should they decide to use them. And as you can see from the right-hand picture, and it's not a great picture admittedly, we have, um, the retaining wall that is holding back some landscaping is deteriorating and failing, it's beginning to buckle. Um, concern being that that condition might be elsewhere in the property. In terms of consistency with the state plan, which is a required, um, precursor to one of the criteria we'll talk about in a minute, the state plan classifies this section of parcyphone as a metropolitan planning area or what the state plan references as a PA1, planning area 1. These planning areas are designed to provide for much of the state's future redevelopment, revitalize, uh, revitalize cities and towns, promote growth in compact forms, stabilize older suburbs, redesign areas, areas of sprawl, and protect the character of existing stable communities. In that, um, the goals for the PA1 planning area are laid out in our report in length, uh, for brevity's sake, uh, and you'll thank me for not going through them, uh, this evening. So in terms of the eight statutory criteria, uh, you'll remember hopefully from the last time, criteria A which is the generality of buildings are substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, or obsolescent, or possess any of these characteristics, or are so lacking in light air and open space to be conducive to unwholesome living or working conditions. As we detailed from the picture earlier, the conditions that we saw in the study area are substandard, unsanitary, dilapidated, and obsolescent, uh, which, uh, under which case criteria A applies. Under criteria B, the important piece of this longer paragraph is the discontinuance of the use of buildings previously used for commercial, retail, shopping malls, plazas, office parks, manufacturing, or industrial purposes. This existing office building again has been vacant for over three years, so criteria B applies. Criteria C and D do not apply, or criteria C does not apply, so we will, um, skip over that one. Criteria D, as in dog, is very similar to A where it's areas with buildings or improvements which by reason of dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement of design, and a whole bunch of other very similar issues that are in our report are detrimental to the health, morals, and welfare of the community. The conditions detailed in our section evidence study area which is dilapidated and obsolescent, the lack of productive use for this building that's been closed for three years, represents a site that supports no jobs, has no beneficial use, and thereby represents a detriment to the welfare of the community. Further, as an unsecured site, the property is an attractive nuisance that is potentially detrimental to the safety, health, morals, and welfare of the community. We also see that, um, the mold is certainly a health issue within the building. So for those reasons collectively, we believe that criterion D applies. Criteria E and F and G are not applicable. So we'll move on to criteria H. Criteria H is the designation of the area is consistent with smart growth planning principles adopted pursuant to law regulation. We spoke earlier about the state plans designating this area as a PA1 metropolitan planning area, and I talked about what the state plan's goals are for, um, for this area. And because of that, we believe that, um, achieving those goals would make the redevelopment of this area, this building, consistent with redevelopment criteria H. So for all of those reasons, um, we recommend to you that the study area conforms with redevelopment criteria A, B, and D, and H. Uh, as you may remember from the last time, any one criteria is sufficient for you to make a recommendation to the governing body that this, this, um, study area conforms with the redevelopment law. So based on this, instead of one, we have four. And we would therefore recommend that you make a recommendation to the governing body that the area conforms with the redevelopment law. And we'd also recommend to you that your recommendation include, should the governing body find this area to be in need of redevelopment and declare to be in need of redevelopment, that they prepare a redevelopment plan after that. That is all I have, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Wait.
Uh, the plan would presumably, well, Mr. Chairman, I, I, protocol-wise, I'm.
Well, what I was gonna ask sort of leads to that, and that is, for the record here, what is the process from here? We, if we find this, that the area looks like it needs to be redeveloped, then we recommend that to the council, then what happens?
So the council, uh, makes that, presumably makes that designation, um, by resolution. They then direct.
We designate that area as an area in need of redevelopment?
Yes.
Resolution.
Yep. And then, uh, presumably they'll direct that a redevelopment plan be prepared. Um, I can't say who would prepare the redevelopment plan, we certainly hope it would be our firm. We would prepare, so the redevelopment would be, uh, plan would be prepared. It would come back to this body for, at that time, review and recommendation and a determination of consistency with the master plan, and then go back to the governing body for adoption by ordinance.
So the, the process basically is we've decided, if we decide that this is an area that needs to be redeveloped, if the governing body then agrees with us, then we develop a plan that basically says what we see here, what kind of zone we see here, what kind of uses we anticipate seeing here, would be something we would then develop and recommend to the governing body, and they would either agree or disagree.
So I can.
No, okay, I'm, I'm.
I can explain, so that could be a process, there's two ways a redevelopment plan to be prepared, either by the governing body, um, the governing body prepares their own redevelopment plan that's referred to the planning board for review, um, and consistency. Or at times, sometimes the governing body will direct the planning board to prepare the redevelopment plan, but it's up to the governing body.
Good, okay, I'm just trying to, to make sure that everybody's aware that there are a series of steps here, it's not.
It is a multi-step process, yes.
All right, so that what would end up eventually there is something that's still a long way in the future.
That's correct, and every step of the process, just like this is a public hearing this evening, there will be a public hearing, um, at the governing body stage, there will be a public hearing when this body reviews whatever redevelopment plan is, um, is established or, uh, is, is prepared. And then as an ordinance, there would be a public hearing as part of the formal adoption process by the governing body.
Okay.
Kind of like a tennis match, you know? Just, just playing, bouncing back and forth.
Yes, so I, I have two questions. The first one, um, were there any overlay zones associated with this or other, other permitted uses that weren't covered in just the standard zoning?
Uh, to the extent, I, I would have put the zoning, whether there's an overlay or not, I, I think I.
I didn't see one, so then, no?
I'm gonna presume not, I mean, it ultimately, at the end of the day, doesn't matter because the redevelopment plan will supplant local zone.
Okay, and then the, the second question, uh, what's, because I'm ignorant about this, what's, what's the status of the ownership of the property? And, and how does the ownership of the property, uh, you know, change over time? What, what's that?
Well, I believe, uh, council here represents the owner. Uh, the owner will be maintaining ownership of the property. I, I would say that's not relevant to the issues as to whether or not the property is.
Oh, okay. Well, the, the reason I ask is because it seems like, you know, this is built on, on letter A, B, and D, all of which I seem to, you know, seem to be normal responsibilities of ownership of a property. In fact, the, all the conditions which you pointed out are accomplished through normal maintenance of the property. And the mold condition that you pointed out happened after the property was, uh, abandoned, for, for lack of a better word. So, uh, when the fire alarms were off.
So, um, but the redevelopment law does make room, contemplate, not even make room, it contemplates this situation as you go through, um, the various criteria. And while there is one of the criteria. one of the criteria that speaks to ownership participating in the, maybe that's the wrong word, but contributing to the problem, that's criteria E, as in echo. We did not find enough evidence to be able to trigger that criteria.
Well, the criteria E has to do with ownership where you can't assemble the property, the problem with title.
It's title, or, yeah, exact, well, a couple of other different things. That's why I said it doesn't apply. We didn't, it doesn't apply.
There's no, there's no criteria in the redevelopment law, in the blatant criteria that addresses or in any way impacts an owner's responsibility with regards to the property. It's not a relevant.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. I, I'm just wondering what's stopping the owner from doing all of the development themselves?
Well, you know what? That's not before us, though. Tonight is an existing condition study as to whether the conditions that are there now, whatever the cause, conforms.
It seems relevant to the A, B and D conditions that you used here, so, at least, at least from my understanding.
Not the way the statute is written.
Okay.
So the redevelopment law provides this option for owners to use the tools of the law to develop their property, redevelop the property in a different way than traditional development.
Okay. And I take it there's some advantages to the property owner to help them make the space better for the community?
There can be incentives for a, a property owner to choose the redevelopment track.
This, this is an abandoned office building. And as we all know, even if they spent large amounts of money to renovate the office building, they would probably have no tenants because the demand for office buildings has gone down. So the, the structure itself is obsolete. Even if it was in good condition, they would have no tenants.
Probably very similar to the Russell Hulk, you know, I'm the council president. The Russell Hulk, well, who answers in the back?
Yeah.
That had to be.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, couldn't, couldn't the tenant, or the owner of the property, take down the existing building and put in whatever was appropriate for that zone? I, I mean, your argument though is that the, the use is, is unsustainable in that.
Exactly. They need to change the use.
So are we going to come back and, and have a different use assigned to that zone in the future?
Well, that's the whole.
That's, that's the next, that's the next step. First, you have to determine that this is an area in need of redevelopment. We're on step one. You're looking ahead to step three.
Okay. And, and look, I appreciate you giving me the information because, you know, I haven't been through this as many times, so.
Well, and, and just obviously every one of these cases stand on the road, and to use evidence from one to another is not, is not binding. But you may recall on the Pomeroy redevelopment study that we did a couple last month, whenever it was, there was an extensive conversation from a real estate professional about the market for office in this area. I would suggest that, that those thoughts, those general conditions would apply.
All right.
But at the end of the day, we've got a building that's been vacant for, if nothing else, if nothing else, we've got a vacant, a building that's been vacant for three years, and that triggers criteria B.
Okay.
It's flat out.
And then, so as you said, for the next step, then it's, it's likely that our elected officials on the council will work out the next stage of the development plan, once the approval is done, and will be offered the opportunity to find it consistent?
That is correct.
Okay.
We will adopt a resolution.
All right. Well, that's, I'm sure in the best interest of our town, then.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions here. Are we proposing any fast food restaurant here? No, I'm just joking, just kidding. So, I mean, jokes apart, quick question, yeah. As far as the redevelopment goes, is there any cost that will be passed on to the township taxpayers?
Say, repeat the question.
Any cost that will be passed on to township taxpayers?
It's my understanding, it's my understanding that the cost of all of this will be paid through escrow, posted by the property owner, is that correct?
Record Johnny Lucio, what happens is in the redevelopment process, municipality pays for the study as a redevelopment process. Because redevelopment under Article 8, Section 3 of the New Jersey State Constitution is by definition a public purpose. Once a redeVELOmer is designated and a redevelopment agreement is entered into, which cannot happen until after redevelopment plans entered into legal, then a standard provision of the redevelopment agreement is that the redeVELOper will reimburse the municipality for all costs associated with the redevelopment process, which would include legal, planning, whatever your costs were, they will be reimbursed, and then an escrow will be established for all costs going forward from there, so that there is ultimately no cost to municipality from a professional standpoint in connection with redevelopment process. But because the law is written the way it's written, and this is public purpose, there is, the case is a Tarragon Hoboken case that goes back, you know, 15, 20 years ago, the initial upfront money for your professionals has to be by the town, but gets reimbursed.
Okay. That's, thank you.
Any other questions by members of the, Mr. Napolitano?
Thank you for the presentation. Do you know what year the building was built?
Oh, I have no idea.
If it's in such bad shape, why is it not just a full condemnation? How come it's non-condemnation? I mean, it sounds like it's in terrible, terrible shape, so.
I think we need to separate the term. Under the building code, condemnation is to condemn a property.
For public use.
So it can't be used until it's fixed up. In the redevelopment context, condemnation is the taking of the property by eminent domain. So in this particular case, the owner of the property is participating in this public-private partnership with the township to move this effort forward. So it's not the same phrase, the wording is the same, but it's not the same meaning as what you were talking about.
Okay. Is it possible to know, is it, looking at a full tear down of this building? Is that possible to know that? Okay. Just concerned, it's not all that mold and other issues, I'm worried about the students and teachers at Eastlake, but.
Yes, it's contemplated that there will be a full tear down of the building, and this is, the governing body designated this as a non-condemnation redevelopment. As was indicated, the property owner is, is working cooperatively with the municipality to try and repurpose this, this property, so that's producing jobs and tax revenue for the municipality. So yeah, I, I think it's fair to say that the building will be.
Is, is there any way to put in there that, that gets torn down in the summertime when school is vacant?
You're, you're on step five, you're on step five.
Gotcha. Step 17.
Yes, step 17. All right. Any other questions by members of the board? Do they have any questions by members of the public? If you would come forward, identify yourself and ask the question, please.
Uh, the microphone?
Yes, we're gonna.
Well, she can speak from there, we'll give her the microphone.
Sure.
Sure.
Julie Peterson, block 226, lot 1, which is on the map. I'm wondering what happens, I mean, I know the municipality is going to pay for the planning and all that stuff. What about the back maintenance and water bills of this property? They will fault a municipal agency.
To the extent there are any, I, this redevelopment process, this redevelopment process does not relieve the property owner of any fees or actions that, that are owed, so that would be taken care of.
At the present time, on the door of this property is a notice that water was shut off on April 14th because of no non-payment of water bills. We live next door, actually, so we're pretty aware of what's going on there. Last summer, the owner refused, well, or didn't.
Do, do you have a question here on this? Sorry, I.
Actually, no better.
All right. Any other members of the public have a question of this witness on this testimony? Hearing and seeing none. I'm assuming again that this is really our business, not, I mean, it's a public hearing.
It is a public hearing. If you have, if people have general comments, that, that's okay.
Okay, okay, I'm just.
If you want.
All right. Do you have anything further to?
I do not, other than any questions the board might have, I'm gone.
Are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment or two? Knowing, knowing full well that this is again, step one in a process.
I'm just wondering if the owner of the property is aware that it might trigger a section 106 review. A section 106 review is done to something that's immediately adjacent to a property on the national register, and the, it's a little shady, but if, if the owner in some instances applies for a loan from a federally governed bank, and not all banks are federally governed, it can trigger a section 106 review, and this is immediately adjacent to a national register.
The redevelopment, the redevelopment process does not alleviate any other state, federal, county for that matter, regulatory approvals, so whether it's DNP or, or CPO or what have you, the developer will take that as part of his due diligence and determine what applications need to be made at what time.
Yeah, so that's step.
Probably 17 and a quarter.
17, eight.
Stroke.
I have another question. I've read the report, and it's very thorough, very fine. At what point will the surrounding zoning be taken into consideration?
The surrounding zoning will be part of the conversation when the redevelopment plan is prepared, and when the redevelopment, or when the uses, the ultimate permitted uses for the property are discussed within the redevelopment plan. Under the redevelopment law, we can only address what's in the red box. So we cannot, would not be a process where we would modify any zoning outside of the red box which is the study area, or ultimately presumably the redevelopment.
I don't know whether this is legal or not, but I want the board to know that originally that was an ROL zone, not able to be subdivided. When our land was sold to the building in back, the, I think it's 10, at that point, the, the conditions of that zone were that you couldn't subdivide an area into three lots. I understand the problem with office buildings certainly, but at the point that Solix put a couple of million dollars into that building about 12 years ago, they had so many people that they had to give up the plans for the lot between us and that building, because there were so many people, there were 400 people working in that building, and in order to satisfy the parking plan, they could not build a building that was permitted for that intermediate lot. The other thing about ROL zones, long, I mean, I'm sure Mr. Tinsworth or Mr. Barbero can, can remember this, they were sold to people in areas of town as really brave neighbors because people didn't use them on Saturdays and Sundays, and because they were planned to look kind of symmetrical. So the building that will probably be torn down is partnered by its building down below us, that's full, that has its block, and they really were attractive buildings. My biggest concern just as a citizen is that it seems to me really easy right now for anybody who owns an office building to let it go for a couple of years and then come and tear it down. And in our neighborhood, we're dealing with the tear down of, I think, five office buildings over the last year, and it's pretty, you know, it's pretty awful. It's noisy, it's dirty, everything else, so I just want to say that. They've heard me say it before. Thanks, thanks for the time.
All right. Any other members of the public have any comments? Hearing and seeing none. I'm assuming your case has been presented here.
My case has been presented.
All right. It closes the evidentiary portion of this hearing. Is there somebody that wishes to either speak or present a resolution?
I just have one very quick comment, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. So since this will be the last opportunity to say something before it comes back for consistency review, I hope that with, with approval, that our, our town council and mayor will, will find some use other than residential for this property, and that's all I'll say about that.
So is the plan.
Excellent. Glad to be on the same page as you.
Yeah, we are.
Who's, do I have a volunteer to make a resolute?
Mr. Kevin.
Mr. DeDeeche.
Motion to approve master plan consistency, area in need of redevelopment, 20-30, Tynonex LLC, block 226, lots 3.2 and 3.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Barberio, very good. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Barberio.
Yes.
DeDeeche.
Yes.
DePiero.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Palatano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Dendiel.
Yes.
Really.
Yes.
Anakin.
Yes.
Lindor.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. And is there anything else that needs to come before the board this evening?
No.
Hearing, do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, you can leave, Mary.
Aye.
Okay.